Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see everyone this morning. And ladies and gentlemen, we are now in the hands of our capable city clerk, Ms. Lisa Carroll.
This is the pre-meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday Tax Day, April 15th. We have approval of this from April the 8th.
Any issues, anyone? Okay.
We have appeals, we have requests for wave of the noise ordinance on April the 19th from 6:30 a.m. until 11:00 a.m. in Mardi Gras Park. May 17th, 6:00 a.m. until 10:30 in Medal of Honor Park. April 19th, from 3:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. on St. Francis Street. April 19th, from 11:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. in Mardi Gras Park. April 19th, from 11:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. in Cathedral Square. May the 4th, from 2:00 p.m. until 5:00 p.m. in British Park. September 12th, oh, July 11th, August 8th, September 12th on North Jackson Street, from 5:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m.
Any issues, Councilman Carroll Woods.
Mr. President, can we, on Medal of Honor Park, can we do 8:00 a.m. instead of 6:00 a.m.? And then again, I'll, I'll call Port City Pacers and just kind of let them know.
Okay. Carroll, you good? Madam Clerk?
Public hearings today is a public hearing to consider a vacation fee as a condition of the vacation of City Right-of-Way located on the west side of Knollwood Drive from north of Medical Park Drive.
Mr. President?
Mr. Reynolds.
Is this, this is for just the fee? This is not for the vacation of the right of way? We've already had that public hearing, is that correct? Okay. Thank you.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Malcolm Banks, President of the Annual Elizabeth Coloring Book Drive. Deborah Ann Crabtree, to speak about Gulf Coast National Day of Prayer. Denise Greer, comments about animal shelter and, shelter and animal ordinance. Reggie Hill, continued petition from previous two weeks, Mobile Housing Authority leadership tenant matters. Public safety performance contracts, AARP, and police home visits. Parks and Recs Department incidents at facilities, citizens' access, and quality of amenities. Ordinances held over 64015, consider rezoning properly located on Knollwood Drive from R1 and B1 to R3.
Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, on this, I think going back to last week, and also to the, the, the meeting, the community meeting that was held, you know, at this point, I, I don't, don't see, or I can't be in favor of changing the zoning designation from R1 to B1 to R3. Again, the residents around this area, you know, when they purchased their, their home, when they invested in their home, whether that's to the right or to the left over there in the Preserve, or to the right, a little further down Knollwood, in the other subdivisions there, you know, they knowingly purchased their home, purchased there, for a lot of people, their biggest investment, knowingly purchased their home, you know, knowing that zoning could change one day, or a request for zoning, but, but when they purchased their home, this was an R1, a B1, and in many cases, this was a medical facility, depending on how long ago these houses were purchased. So, again, you know, being at the meeting, I'm sorry, being at the meeting, the community meeting, sitting on Planning Commission, hearing, hearing the, the, those that have posted at Planning Commission, and now here we are, I'm at City Council, hearing the, the feedback on, you know, not, not once have I heard anybody that was in favor of the rezoning, outside of the owner of the property and their legal representation. So, you know, with that being said, I'm a, I'm a no vote on this. I'm gonna, you know, not saying that, that this, this really isn't about a development, this is about a rezoning, and I think we can, we can lose, we can lose thought, we can lose focus on, on what the matter at hand is. The matter at hand isn't what the development is, the matter at hand is, is should this property be reclassified, rezoned to R3? Should it be upzoned to R3 from, from an R1, and then, you know, a comparative or companion piece of B1? So, end of the day, I'm a no on this. I do know, I do believe, you know, and I guess we can, I know that the, the owners' legal representations here at pre-council, I do believe a letter that came across my inbox suggested potentially a holdover. You know, I, I would say, I'm not in favor of a holdover, I believe that, that, you know, from the time this was, you know, in, in February, we had the community meeting with some odd 80 people there, from February to today, April 15th, you know, discussions could have ensued, things could have ensued. I don't see what holding over a week would do. I don't think it's going to significantly change the, the areas, the adjoining neighbors, the joint neighborhood, I don't think it's going to significantly impact their opinion of should this be R1, or should this be R3. But, so I'm a no on layover, but, you know, if it is suggested, but, you know, at this case, I'm also a no vote on, on rezoning.
Could I ask you a question, Councilman Woods? And just being respectful, I know that's just your district. I am an advocate for affordable houses, and, and most of us on this council, if I want to say, really, the majority of us are. But if you think possible that the developer probably could do some type of negotiation, and probably just hold it over for two weeks to see if they're in a type of negotiation that could be done, are you willing to do that?
Right, and again, I think we're confusing the fact, respectfully, I think we're confusing the fact of, of a development decision, or we're discussing development, but right now we're discussing rezoning. So, you know, with that being said, I'm too in favor of affordable housing across the, but again, that's a development. I just think that the neighbors' concern is about the R3, because again, let's just say that we focus on the, and I will point out, the most recent Hope House was built two blocks over from my house. So, I'm a big advocate, anytime we can, we can add to District 6, to the residents of the quality of life, and also to apply affordable housing, creative housing, I'm all for. But in this case, again, instead of getting lost in the weeds of what a development looks like, because let's be honest, the, the property owner could get this R3 designation, let's say that I do know, you know, we do know that it's applied for the 4% tax credit, let's just say they don't get the tax credit, they decide not to go through with this development, because again, we can't focus on the development, we got to focus on the rezoning. They decide not to, you know, they didn't get the 4%, they're not going to pursue this. I'm sitting here with a piece of District 6, and it R3, that, you know, was R1, B1. So, that's, that's, that's my only thing, I, you know, I'm a no on holding it over. Feel free to hold it over if y'all feel so, but I, I just don't foresee the issues regarding the R3 designation being overcome in two weeks, so, but, but yeah, that's, that's just my.
Councilman Penn and Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I understand my colleague, his stating about the rezoning piece. For me, of course, I usually, from my perspective, want to make sure that, that council member represent that area, they know more. But I think we also have issues across the city when it affects everyone, and housing is a major piece of that, that we need a lot of more housing in our city limits. And so for me, I understand your concerns, but I think hopefully, maybe if we at least lay it over two weeks, it's not hurting, changing your perspective of how you're going to vote, but maybe some conversations can take place where some changes could be negotiated, where they can hear both sides. I know that maybe part of the land might continue to stay R1. My other concern is on last week, of course, we heard the feedback, the, to me, the, every issue, when a planning commission make a suggestion and say, okay, this is what we think, for me, as a council member, to go against that would be because of something that would create problems, or create issues and challenges. Well, everything that I heard from last week, even if we leave it R1 and B1, will still create those same issues and challenges that they stated, that they stated at the council member. I know it could be some private conversation that you had regarding zoning, but at the council meeting, those things are the same issues if they are all one or B1, if someone come and bring any type of development there. And so for me, of course, like I said, I usually stay, but I would recommend, it's important, just give them an opportunity to talk, and see what negotiation things could take place during this time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Vice President?
No, I was just going to say, since I think the applicant has requested a layover, that we give that consideration, and potentially some resolution could be reached, at least they can go back and talk.
Mr. Reynolds.
That, those talks can happen whether or not this is on the table or not, and if there were any changes to the zoning classification, it's got to start back over, you got to do another public hearing, you got to re-advertise, I mean, this is not new territory we're in here, this is, this is simple, that those discussions can be had with or without this on the agenda. I know Councilman Woods and I have asked that, in an effort to further those conversations along, we've asked the applicant to withdraw this application, so that we could get on with those negotiations, and something different can be introduced that can be, you know, acceptable to the area. So, but if, if, you know, we proceed and say it dies, they're, they can't reapply for the rezoning for a year. So it's logical that the, in order to further the discussions along with the neighbors and, and everybody in the general area, the only logical thing to do is withdraw the application. A two-week timeframe is not going to accomplish anything. So, you know, I'm with Councilman Woods on this, that if we really want to affect this housing issue we have, which is both single-family and multifamily, and we want to do it in the right way, then the best way forward is for them to withdraw the application. But look, we've, we've had many discussions, this is not like this just sprung up on us, we went to a community meeting where there were over 100 residents there, we've seen little or no modification to their plan at all. So they just want to push forward, you know, so, and then we get this, you know, frankly ridiculous letter from their lawyer, I mean, it's just absurd, the allegations or claims that are being made, and, you know, I just think the right way forward is not hold it over, not continue down this road, which is going to further delay any development on the property, the right thing to do is for them to withdraw.
Mr. President.
Mr. Woods.
Now, I'd also say, and again, this is a, this is a zoning discussion, not a development discussion, but in my, in my mind's eye, again, seeing the community meeting, again, sitting on Planning Commission, hearing the, the feedback at, at Planning Commission level, and then last week seeing this, you know, even though this isn't a discussion about development, it's a discussion about rezoning, and I'm beleagring that point, but, you know, with, to me, withdrawing this would be the most constructive and beneficial aspect of this request, but again, I don't, I don't, I don't make that decision, that's up to the, the applicant, because I would, I do not, and I do not want to hold up progress, that's one thing that, that I would say, I, if something good's going on, if something's going to happen, I don't want to hold it up. My big fear is, is that this does get kicked two weeks, that potentially this gets denied, and here we are, a property that, that really, since, I mean, I can't tell you when the hospital was torn down, you know, this, this property's been there forever, something, something's going to go into it, and I, I would hate to hold this up for a year, of, of a request, having to wait a year to come back, or developer having to wait a year to come back with a better plan. In my mind's eye, the ideal situation for me is to withdraw this, for the applicant to withdraw, let's all sit down with the neighbors, let's do something constructive, let's figure out what the, the most constructive way, or the best way to move forward with, with a project that could be proposed is, so that this, this, this place, or this lot, this, this development, or this, this land gets used more constructively to the benefit of, of the neighborhood, and the benefit of District 6, and the joining District 4. So that, that to me, the, the best situation, I would say, is instead of holding this over, and then we, we're pushed two weeks to try to, try to figure something out, and then again, we, we get the same result that we could get today. I, you know, I, that's just my opinion, withdrawing the request, let's sit down, and then let's potentially save everybody a year, but again, that's just my opinion. But then again, it's, going back though, it's not a development, the development that there's proposed could continue on, even with this request withdrawn. It could continue on seeking the 4% tax credit, could, it doesn't change anything about the proposed development, this, end of the day, this is a zoning matter, not a development matter. But that's me, that's just where I'm at, so, I appreciate, but thank you for all your comments, I do appreciate that.
Anyone else? And again, you know, I understand where Councilman Woods is coming from, but usually, you know, the history of this council, if an applicant, there's a big question about something, or there's a bit debate about something, we usually follow what the applicant asks us to do to, you know, with the layover, but again, we can just see each other at 10:30. Councilman Dave, then Councilman Carroll.
If the applicant, it wasn't clear to me from that letter, that the applicant was actually requesting a layover, to me, it was an idea, if the applicant is requesting a layover, I'm willing to support the layover.
Yeah, and that, you know, ridiculous letter we, we got, they said that they would be amicable to a holdover for one week, not two weeks, and...
He said they would be, they would be...
They would be okay with it.
They'd be okay with it, which is not the same as requesting it.
That's exactly right.
Councilman Carroll.
The, the idea of an attorney saying that they would be okay with a layover, I would say would be synonymous in the request of an ask. To say that they would be okay with the request is not demanding that we give it, but is actually insinuating an ask, in hope that we would follow the process that we normally do as a council and grant a holdover. I personally think that a layover of a week or two would be beneficial. I keep hearing that it's not about the development, but we all know as council members, we all know as council members that we react to the citizens and their stances on developments in an area, and whether or not they want it rezoned, based on what type of development is going in the area. So if there was another development going in the area, they may not be opposed to it. And that's the honest to God's truth, the reaction is based on what's going on the property in changing the rezoning. And based on what I heard last week, it seems like the reactions of the council member is based on the reactions of the people out there, and I think that's a meritorious position to be in, you're representing the people that are there. But we also have to remember the process that this council has followed from its onset. If the attorney is insinuating that they would like a layover, then I think that we should give it to them.
Okay. Yeah, it's the...
Casey.
Casey. I'm going to ask Mr. Pis, with your applicant, I mean, your client, do you think that he wants a two-week layover there? Just a simple yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on. Madam Clerk?
88016, is authorize land exchange of properties located at 321 Adams Street, 321 North Warren Street, 305 Conker Street, and Lyons Street, not now needed for municipal purposes. 88017, authorize land exchange of properties located at 603 Broad Street and 2865 Phillips Street, not now needed for municipal purpose.
All right, Mr. Carroll.
On the Adams, Lyons, property, Warren Street, I've, I've spoken with both parties involved, being MAMGA and also the YMCA, the Dearborn Street YMCA. I think that if this council moves forward with the land swap, and the struc, and the structure that it currently is, we'd be doing detrimental harm to the Dearborn Street YMCA. The way that the ordinance is set up, it gives the Dearborn Street YMCA possession of that 4.1, 4.3 million dollar facility, but it takes away all of the support that the city has been giving to that facility for a number of years, I think, going all the way back to 1970 something, maybe 78, I couldn't actually find the date, which then brings me to the point that, and I say this all the time when we do ordinances in this city, that if the ordinance structure isn't put into the right, right position, and we can't find it from administration to administration, then we don't know, or we can't remember what the operating, operating agreements were. So, the city's been paying the utility costs, supposedly been doing the maintenance on the building, supposedly doing the upkeep on the building, since, I, I guess, the onset of the building, which was 1978. So if we now cut them off, then we're essentially putting the Dearborn Street YMCA out of business. And I don't think that MAMGA wants to do that, and I don't think the city wants to do that. So, in my opinion, either we don't grant either one, we don't do the land swap, and we let it stay where it is, and we keep the operating agreement where it is, or we find a way to find common ground to where we can maintain what we're doing.
Councilman Woods.
So, I'm a council... Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. So, um...
Sorry.
So, I, I, there's no rush on this, it can, it can be held over, there are a number of details that we need to fill you all in on, I think there might be some misunderstandings by the outside parties, this is so old, this is back to 1974, there are a number of issues that we need to inform you all about. And also, there, there's at least one issue that we need to talk about, probably in executive session, that's germane here, but it should not take long, but it, it, this should probably be held over, at least for a involved discussion, no rush, and then if you all want to talk to me, and the other people involved, side by side, that's fine, but, but there's no rush on this.
I'm fine with a holdover, but I would think it would need an extensive holdover in order to actually find all the information in, in the statutes in which it was set up. There's questions on the property purchases of the two piece, of two pieces that we're trying to give to MAMGA, which I couldn't find any record of the city purchasing those two pieces, so they had to be purchased outside of the city. And then parcel number one on Warren Street was purchased by the city, and the city built that facility in 1975. So I would think that the city owns that piece, but I don't think, based on what I've saw, and I don't know, because I've only been doing, digging into this for about a week now, I don't think the city can confer something that we don't own. So, and that's, those are the two pieces that are directly behind the Y that were bought, I think maybe under the Jeffries administration, when he was director of the YWCA. So there's a lot here that is extremely unclear, that we may be doing, that may cause indirect harm to them.
So, no one's trying to cause harm to the Y, I think that's been well thought out, but we're more than willing to explain to you what this is, so you're, you're not, you're not accurate on some of those things, but there are things that are accurate, but to give you all a clear picture, you, you will need time, I would say, you know, give it two weeks, at least let us explain those things, if you need longer, then fine, but there's no time clock on this. However, there are issues that I need to talk to you about in executive session that are germane to why we're doing this.
We can do that, I mean, Councilman Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I just want to join in, my colleague, I know, I love his statements that this might, you know, this probably wasn't a course nothing the city, or the other organization is trying to do, but to make sure that we doing it right, I just want to be very clear, that everything that we see in our city, from supporting our communities, making sure our youth have the resources, they need, the Dearborn and YMCA does that. Anything that will bring any challenges for them being able to accomplish the things that they would like to do, that they're already doing, that so many amazing things in our communities, it, you know, they, they purchased through some funds, the old YWCA building that's in Tomerville, and that building, if I didn't have that resource, I wouldn't even be here today. My mother, when she was young, gave me those type of services. I was diagnosed with a speech impediment, and at that building is where they gave me speech therapy. So I wouldn't be in the position that I am today if it weren't for resources like the YMCA. And so for me, anything that creates any challenges, and I know the city is not trying to do that, these organizations, but I just want to be clear, that I don't support anything that would create that, and so forward, moving forward, we need to figure out and have those conversations, so I support laying this over, and let's figure out, because honestly, they deserve even more resources. So, but let's figure out how to create these things that's needed to benefit our community and our young people. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, we will do a roll call vote at the end of this meeting. Madam Clerk?
He's talking about for...
For executive session.
Did we decide how much...
Probably didn't have to wait till we hear what's going on in executive session, we will discuss between now and 10:30. All right, Madam Clerk?
CIP resolutions held over, 09564, transfer funds for capital projects, CIP D2, special project to housing improvement plan fund, District 2 Neighborhood Improvements. 21565, authorized contract of Gorman Air Conditioning for CIP Hillsdale Community Center HVAC replacement. 21566, authorized contract of Harris Contracting Services for Millers and Tremere Parks, ball field pole removal. Resolutions held over, 47446, consider vacation, City Right-of-Way on Knollwood Drive and North Medical Park Drive.
Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
On this, this road, I learned through these public hearings we've had, that there was once this plan to have Knollwood be four lanes, and I think that possibility still exists, that it could be, especially as the area continues to develop, and I think it's important that the city keeps this property, this right of way, in the event that there's an opportunity that presents itself. That, that intersection there at Gerby and Knollwood, and there have been wreck after wreck, it's a, it's a complicated intersection there, it's a pinch point, and at some point in the future, the city is going to have to do something there. And if we vacate this right of way, it may limit our possibilities in the future, so I would, I think the, the right thing to do here is, is not vacate this right of way.
Okay. Any questions, comment, anyone? Mr. Woods.
I, I can cover that as well, that, I sat at that intersection, or I sat at this area where this vacation is, I guess probably about 30 minutes the other day, just watching, and the tradition, or, you know, what Knollwood's current structure is, is Knollwood goes from right there, government, a four-lane with a center turn, and then right when you get to the Circle K, right when you get to what we did rezon B3, a couple, I guess about a month ago, right when you get to that, it shifts down to two lanes, and I know that's, every morning when I take my boys to school, that's, you know, merging in, it, it's a complicated area, I'm on top of that, Knollwood really, I know it's a two, two lanes with a center turn, but being honest, it's really about two and, two and a half lanes instead of three. Knollwood will need to be expanded one day, just due to the congestion that it sees, also the, the speed of the traffic, it, so I, I think it's wise for the city to, to hold on to this, this right of way, because there, it's just going to have to get it back, if it comes time for, time for expansion of Knollwood, when it comes time for expansion of Knollwood.
Councilman Dave.
I agree with my colleagues, you know, when we've done these vacations in the past, we, we only do them in cases where there's virtually no chance that we're ever going to need that right of way again, and I just don't think that's the case with respect to this one, I think there is a, a fair likelihood we might need it at some time in the future, and we ought to hold on to it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk?
01567, authorized agreement with Alabama Department of Transportation for detection equipment upgrades at, at intersections on Old Shell Road. 08569, approved purchase order to fly motion, fly motion for drone with camera. 21571, authorized contract with Jordan DeLasse, to provide racket stringer services for Parks and Recreation Department. 21572, authorized contract with Caleb Richardson to provide tennis lessons in clinics. 25573, accept a perpetual, non-exclusive easement from the Mobile Area Water and Sewer Commissioners for the Africa Town Welcome Center. 37574 and 575 are considering applications for certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a limousine service and a sedan service. Consent resolutions being introduced, 31577 and 578, 579, are authorizing the mayor to apply, accept, and receive a grant from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, National Coastal Resilience Fund.
Yeah, Mr. Amberger.
He's not here.
He's not here, yeah, where, where would this money probably be directed to? Can anyone tell us?
So the, the funds would be used for additional improvements to the bulkhead along Cooper Riverside Park, going from the National Maritime Museum down to the cruise terminal.
I, I just want to put this out there, you know, there's a piece of land off of DIP that the citizens think that, you know, it's going to be a beachfront property, don't forget about it.
We're, we're actively looking, so, you know, as soon as we are able to identify something, then we'll definitely let you know.
All right, thank you so much. Mr. Reynolds.
If you don't mind, the, the next two line items that she's going to read are also grants, can you explain these other two as well?
Sure.
Which is the...
Can, can the clerk read it first?
Yes, sir, please.
Yes, sir, please.
Authorizing the mayor to apply, accept, and receive a grant from the National League of Cities to advance the Economic Mobility Rapid Grant Program, and also a grant from the National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration in support of NAS Gulf Research Program.
Yeah, so the first one, 31578, actually, Arsha Nikas here, I believe, to speak to that. She's got some information.
So this is a grant from the National League of Cities to help us further our publicity as well as outreach for our Money Moves Boot Camp and to start the second phase of that, which is to also include information on workforce development. So this will allow us to be able to publicize those events, but also make sure that we're circling around to all of our districts, and particularly one, two, and three, to make sure that our citizens are aware of what services are available to them, free of charge. This particular grant stated that we could use it for, to further small businesses, to inform citizens of government services that are available to them, and also workforce development. So we'll be using this to publicize the workforce development as well as the financial information that's free of charge to the citizens through our banks and financial institutions, as well as some of the programs, such as Councilman Carol and the mayor were able to see last week, which had to do with the craftsman training program, but also some of the programs that are available through the high schools and community colleges.
Mr. President.
Mr. Penn.
I just want to tell Ms. Kidd, thank you so much for, for all the service that you're providing. I had the opportunity to stop by the Money Matters Boot Camp this past Saturday, and just hearing the feedback from the residents was amazing. So thank you to your team, and I'm excited about this grant opportunity, and thank you to the administration for supporting initiatives like this. Thank you, Ms. President.
Okay, and then finally, 31579, this is a grant request for the NAS Gulf Research Program, which it will actually provide environmental literacy in regards to emergency declarations, things like this, and hurricane awareness. Actually, Madeline Dotson is here with the resilience office, and she can provide you a little bit more detail on that program.
So this grant is actually leftover settlement funds from the oil spill, and it can be used for any form of environmental literacy program. So we're focusing it on hurricane preparedness and prepping residents for upcoming disasters.
Mr. Penn.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So how would it be implemented? Would it be going into our recreation centers, our school system? How does it look?
Yeah, so we'll be partnering with various universities to both look at doing visualizations, and so this is where we can actually use technology to demonstrate what storm surge might look like at a particular location, and to help residents kind of understand the decision-making processes that go into whether, to what a storm surge alert looks like, also understanding forecast models, understanding alerts, and then also the basics of making hurricane kits. And so we can look exactly at how we would be implementing that, either through series of community meetings or through working with Parks and Recreation. But this initial grant is just to be able to obtain the funds to initiate this program.
So with using these funds, are you looking to add, like, a person to be over this, like, with this salary position?
No, sir.
Okay, so you utilize the team that you already have to implement?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all so much. Madam Clerk.
37580 recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license to BBQ Chicken on Airport Boulevard. 46581 honorarily rename the intersection of Donald and Seal Streets to honorary Francesca Hollis Reese Way. 6582 and 583 are proven award special bonus to Officer of the Month and Firefighter of the Month. 6584, 85, 86, and 87 are determining appropriations to Community of Mobile Inc., SKC Development Group, Dearborn YMCA, and Ronald McDonald House Charities of Mobile, serve a public purpose and a proven payment. CIP resolutions being introduced, 01588 authorized agreement with JNA Contracting for McCann Shavers Tricentennial Sullivan and James M. Seals Jr. Parks for splash pad recoating, $49,996.
Vice President.
On this one, since, of course, summertime is upon us, and it's under $50,000, just barely, but under, I'm wondering if you all would be willing to waive the rules?
All right, Madam Clerk.
Resolutions being introduced, 01589 authorized agreement with Alabama Pool Works for pool chemistry maintenance services, $75,000 per year. 01590 authorized public works cooperative agreement and construction certification with the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners for the City of Mobile for the One Mobile Project, $3 million. 01591 authorized agreement with Gorm Air Conditioning for West Regional Library Chiller Replacement, $407,400. 08592 approved purchase order to CDW Government for subscription to Aruba Network Wireless Access Software, $17,328.72.
Mr. President.
Vice President.
On this one too, since it's just over 17,000, do you all want to waive the rules on? And I think it's the only other one that's, yeah, under 50. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
08593 approved purchase order to CDW Government for network wireless access points, switches, and transceivers, $79,919.14. 08594 approved purchase order, CDW Government for network switches, transceivers, $53,993.14. 08595 approved purchase order to Jackson Creek Manufacturing for animal transport trailer, 21596 authorized contract with Diallo Green to provide prevention and intervention services to students in Mobile County Public Schools, $65,000 per year. 47597 consider vacation fee as a condition of vacation right-of-way located the west side of Knollwood Drive, and just north of Medical Park Drive. 65...
Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. ...
Could we go back to 21596, as far as the prevention intervention services to students in the school system? What is that, just, just for, out of curiosity, and just, you know, what does that kind of look like, I guess?
The monies we receive, morning, first of all, the monies we receive for this contract is from the school system. So they gave us dollars to invest in the school system as we continue to streamline our resources in mitigation and prevention, to have someone in place in the school system, working alongside our prevention team, our family intervention team, and our victim services to mitigate and prevent some things that we're seeing.
I think we have a public safety committee meeting today, is that correct?
So I'm like, 29...
We got the news. Madam Clerk.
6598, 599, authorizing settlement agreement and release of claims. 01603 receiving resolution, 01438 adopted March 11, 2025. 01604 authorized agreement with Alabama Department of Transportation for IT and Mobile River Bridge and Bayway Project. Call for public hearings, 41600, call for public hearing to consider the application for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a taxi cab service scheduled April the 29th. 41601 call for public hearing to consider vacation of city right-of-way for property located at the corner of Dolphin Street and Sage Avenue, scheduled May 20th. 41602 call for public hearing to consider vacation of big fee for a condition of the vacation of city right-of-way for property located on the corner of Dolphin Street and Sage Avenue, scheduled May 20th. Announcements.
Counsel. Anthony from Administration.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Ricardo Woods. I'm licensed to practice law in the city and in the state of Alabama, has also served as a city attorney. At this time, I want to authenticate that we go into executive session over a matter that involves, one, anticipation of legal ramifications that may have to be considered by this body, and, two, an issue of a land exchange that we need to talk about confidentially. I'd ask that we reconvene at 10:30.
Property moving second in a discussion. Madam Clerk.
President Small.
Yes.
Vice President Gregory.
Yes.
Councilmember Penn.
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll.
Yes.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Yes.
Councilmember Dave.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
All right, we see each other downstairs at 10:30.
The executive director of the Dearborn Street Y is here. Being that this matters about their facility, are they excluded from this executive session? It's only us.
All right. We see each other downstairs at 10:30.